Okay, we're good. This meeting is being recorded by NRSD in conjunction with the Templeton Community TV, or TCTV, and that recording is provided to Templeton and Phillipston Cable Access TV. These recordings are also out on Facebook and YouTube as well. And before we start, I would like, if the committee would indulge me, to just make a quick statement. That'll be okay. I just want to make a public apology for some comments that came out of my mouth at the end of the district-wide town meeting. They were caught in a hot mic. It was not made to the general public. They were unprofessional, inappropriate, inexcusable, and I do want to extend my sincere apologies for that. I have no excuses for it, and I won't try to justify them, but I will try to hold myself to a much higher standard of ethical behavior going forward. With that being said, public input. Do we have anyone who would like to come down and speak? And if so, we have a microphone set up. I just need you to introduce yourself.
Hi. I'm Julie Kinney. I live in Templeton on Lord Road. And I just wanted to address all of you to thank for your continued support of our kids, our schools, and all of the battles we've had to bear over the last several years. I'm just coming into it recently. I just want to say thank you to each and every single one of your contributions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We really don't want public speaking, so it took me a lot.
Okay. If you just want to introduce yourself and where you live?
I'm Dr. Mark. I live in Phillipston, also in Wayne. I'm going to stick to my script, so I don't get too emotional. As a member of this community, and also a claimant, I came here tonight to ask that you be to be on that call. Please do not accept the lower-remended amount of 19.5 million dollars in the district town meeting. We cannot afford to cut another $300,000 on top of $600,000 in the district's salary. Meeting members keep talking about safety, the safety of the town, vote no, or a fee will be cut. Well, if the fees are cut, another town will pick up that call. The state lease will pick up that call. Who is going to answer the call for the children of this district? Teachers or staff? Who is answering that call? Who is answering the call for help with behavioral issues in this district? Who is answering the call to get more support in place for our most vulnerable students? Who is answering the call from teachers and staff? We have serious safety issues every single day. Without appropriate funding, our calls are unanswered. Another town is not going to pick up our call. The only way our call is going to be answered is by the district's getting fully funded. We cannot go any longer without the help we so desperately need. Our safety issues, they're a grave concern. Please do not accept the amended amount.
Thank you. Do I have any other public input? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to our next agenda item. I don't see an NDA rep, so we'll pass over that. Business managers reported. I didn't know if there was anything that you needed to advance us of now. And we will go right into the heart of our FY '20 budget discussion. Just to put everything in perspective, we had our district-wide town meeting on September 25th on the floor. The ask of the 19, allow me to round, 19.8 million dollars, was amended down to 19.5 million, which is what passed on the floor. So we are back here once again to take action on that number. We have multiple options as a committee. We can certify at 19.5 million, or anything lower, and we will be done with the certification piece. That means some other things would have to be done. We can certify the original amount. We can amend that amount. If it's anything higher than 19.5, we will need to then go into another district-wide town meeting. So with that on the floor, I'm going to first turn it over to Dr. Kazavant to give us his thoughts and opinions on the matter.
So, thank you, Chair. Well, as I see it at this point, there are really only a couple options. One, certify the number, you know, that has been, we've been discussing for at least three months, the 1978, 6889, which has been silently defeated, I believe, three times, if I'm keeping count. The other option, or A, another option, is that you could take the, what I'll call additional revenue that came in after the budget was completed, our budget was completed, and which, between transportation, which was, I believe, 43,000, and additional on the cherry sheet, and 5,000 for charter school reimbursement, came to about $48,000, okay, obviously, do the simple math. You could apply that to the Templeton receipts, which would lower their assessment, right? They would lower the amount of money that they would, in turn, need to pay us. It would not change the bottom line, though. It would not change the 1978, 6889. It would just simply take monies from basically what we would have in reserve, especially around transportation, and we would not have those monies available to us.
Just to clarify, you said Templeton. It's actually both Templeton and Phillipston.
And Phillipston.
I just wanted to make sure that was clear.
Yeah, sorry. Templeton and Phillipston, my fault. So it will offset, you know, a bit. And it would not change the bottom line. I guess there's really no other way to say this than through, one must have to take into consideration the 19.5 number. It has been defeated, the number that we, the committee has put forward, has been silently defeated, and quite frankly, has, you know, the delta between the yeses and the noses has actually grown as the meetings have gone on. So as a matter of course, we had to look at, what would 19.5 look like to this district? Because, again, as we've talked about, if we go to 19.5, there has to be staff cuts. Has to be. And so, what that would look like, and the difference between the 1907 number and the 195 is $286,889. Well, when you're talking cuts and you're talking people, you will never actually hit that number exactly. So whether you're a little bit under or a little bit over, it's just how the salary, you know, basically adds up. But what I'm about to detail for you would be a total of $304,276 in cuts to get us to the approximate 19.5 number. It would require the cutting of two elementary teachers, one nurse, one paraprofessional, an administrator, supply accounts of about roughly $11,000, academic achievement account of roughly $3,000, et cetera. So all adding up to approximately $304,276. I'm not going to go into details about who, given the fact that this is my first opportunity to express what that would cost in terms of human capital. I would want the opportunity to speak to individuals directly, before they heard their name, you know, or actually read it on Facebook, or something to that effect, and I would want to have a conversation, which quite frankly, I'm going to have with them tomorrow. Or as soon as I possibly can. If not tomorrow, then of course, the next day. This will mean that children will transfer. That's what this means. I'm not going to go into it any further. We're too small of a district. If I identify one way or another, that will identify names, positions, and I'm not going to do that. But it will mean the reconfiguration of this district to a point. Quite frankly, if I may, expound just a little bit. I'm not sure where the 30-whatever-plus folks who stormed the Kiva on so many summer afternoons or evenings are, but not all of them are attending these district-wide meetings. There are many who are. There are several out here who've gone to every meeting, and then some. So it's certainly not a blanket statement, but clearly, if abstention is a no vote, which in some parliaments it is, they clearly know the ramifications of this. I'm not, you know, so I guess I'll leave it there. I would simply say that, you know, the democratic process has taken place three times, and it has, you know, come up, you know, at least to our disadvantage on all three of those occasions. So tomorrow, I will try to meet with every individual of which I am speaking. If that can happen, then I will write a letter to the committee, and I will post it to explain what positions I am speaking of, so that people are very clear about what I'm talking about, without talking in code. But I'm not going to do that until I am able to speak with the individuals in which I'm referring to.
So, in short, your recommendation to this committee would be?
The recommendation is to move forward the number with the revenue, right?
Additional receipts?
I'm sorry, I don't have the...
The additional revenue?
The additional revenue. The 1907, okay? Which means that it doesn't change the number, but it does take, it does affect us. It is $48,000 of money. That is my recommendation. Quite frankly, you know, how the community votes that evening, coming up, you know, in terms of democracy works for those who show up. And, you know, I certainly won't, I know my place, but these cuts would have to be, if that number does in fact, you know, come forward, you know, we would have to obviously, you know, make those cuts if that's the wish of the committee. It's my recommendation, obviously.
Anybody have any questions, comments for Dr. Kazavant, or in general? Okay, seeing none, I would entertain a motion. How about we do this? I'm going to entertain a motion to reconfirm our certification of the original amount. If that passes or fails, then we can go from there, but at least we'll have something to move on. If that would not be okay with the committee, so I would entertain a motion that the Narragansett Regional School District School Committee vote and certify the amount of $19,786,889 for the FY '20 budget. Do I have a second?
Second.
And I have a second. Is there any discussion on that number?
I think it's unfortunate that every time we have another meeting, we get less and less support at town meeting. I would give Irwin three chances to pass this budget and come out. Makes me sad. I just don't know where we go from here.
Any other comments? Okay, seeing none, we'll take a roll call vote on passing on the motion, which was to certify, to reconfirm our certification of $19,786,889 for the FY '20 budget. Mrs. Chardier? Mr. Mason?
No.
Mrs. Trifolo?
Yes.
Mr. Marks?
Yes.
Mrs. Robichaud?
Yes.
Mrs. Matson?
No.
Mrs. Hughes says yes. That means it's five to two. We do not have enough to pass a budget vote with that. So we need to go back and have some more discussion. Yes, Mrs. Chardier?
If it doesn't pass, coming to nothing, does the original rule stand?
If we don't recertify anything, we have, our number is as it is.
Which is the 19...
Right, right.
I'm not trying to disregard what you guys are going to have, but I understand that's what we're doing.
Other comments?
May I ask a question?
Yes, sure.
So, just for my clarification, I just, again, I don't know if the committee wants to bail me on this, but I don't know if that number is not voted, was there a number that is more palatable? So I guess, I'm just wondering, I don't know, again, the no votes, I don't, I'm trying to just kind of understand a little bit better. I don't know what the no means. I know that the no is for that number, but I don't know if there's another.
If they don't need it, they haven't, they're not getting the support, you know. Like you said, the markets do work for those who show up, and they're not showing up. And I'll see the point of keep going back and spending money for these elections if we're not getting it.
What we're doing, what we're doing today, is keeping that number, knowing that the superintendent is meeting with personnel. And because we cannot talk now about what would be cut, we know the number of positions. But he's meeting with personnel, so we could meet next week. And depending on the reaction from the community with those cuts, we can meet next week and go through this again and lower the number. But if you lower the number right now, then you haven't given the community a chance to react to the cuts that will be happening, and they will be happening with different types of situations, and will affect K12. So we don't give them a chance if we lower the number now. Now, someone might say, well, we had three chances, and we didn't see teachers, parents, family members. But I think there was some misunderstanding of that, that would not happen once these cuts are announced.
Mrs. Chardier?
My only problem is that, as I'm aware of, people are going to express their opinions on social media. I think it's not for me to tell them. I mean, unless you, Mr. Carr, went up to the meeting and asked me, why do people come and speak to us?
Well, no, they would come as they came in the summer. See, my point was, we had citizens from Phillipston here in the summer, because they wanted something. And definitely, they wanted their building, they wanted lower-class sizes, and they came. So that week would allow, I mean, parents would see where their kids are going to be, and what numbers they'll be in. Think the committee reacted to that then? I don't know. Did they just go away? That's what I'm saying. Are they still out there and still mean it, or do we just go with people who don't understand the process that we engaged in in the summer with the parents? That's my point.
Lori, you were...
My no vote is not to go with the 19.5. That's not where my mind's at. But I do think that we should compromise a little bit. I think with the voters of Templeton voting no three times, I'm just, I'm kind of done with it. And I think that we could look at some of the options that he presented, and it doesn't have to be the 19.5 number. That's really not where I want to go. I think that's too drastic. I think it's not fair. I don't think any of those cuts are fair, but I think we could do something, and where we started with the 48,000.
I'm just, I, so, just, yeah.
Well, that's some money back, but then if we could cut...
So I just want to, so your no vote wasn't to say we want 19.5?
Correct.
I just want to make, okay.
I just want to compromise a little.
Okay. And we are, just so the people out in the audience here, with the recommendation Dr. Kazavant made with the additional receipts, it does lower the allocation to the assessment to Templeton by 41,000 and change, and to Phillipston by about $7,800. So I just want to put that out there. So, you know, the scope that we were talking to with the receipts, because that wasn't made clear, and I did want to have that on the record. So Lori, what you're saying is, in addition to that, you're looking for some, a few other things...
Correct.
...to come up somewhere in between. Okay, just want to make sure I...
Correct. Because, I mean, going, if Templeton gets 41, it's 41.79, basically. What's that going to give them, maybe, not even one cop? I don't even know what that, that would give them. Fold a cop here.
Okay. Mrs. Chardier, did you...
I understand that we're going to, just, if we need to reiterate, if we have compromised, are trying to go down...
I know.
...$20 million, like, if we, the one they compromised, how's that ever come through?
Well, we also, I mean, we could also go back to the whole situation where we just found out that there's nine-point-something million dollars, or nine percent in the free cash in Templeton, whereas there's supposed to be three to five percent. And we're supposed to hold three to five percent, and what is our, what are we holding right now?
After we pledged about half a percent, maybe?
Maybe a half a percent. So, I mean, where's the fairness in that? There is no fairness. I mean, I've been on this committee for 10 years, and every single year, it always comes back to us. It always comes back to us. You cut, you cut, you cut. Always. It's not, I go through it every year.
And, and Hank, and I do, I appreciate that, I really do. And I get where you're going with that. My thing is, I just have not seen, we've gone through, we've gone through different scenarios, we've been back and forth, and nothing has changed. It makes me think that cutting anything additional is going to help the students, it's going to make it any better. I haven't seen anything, Lori, I agree with you about the surplus, the additional money, it's there. I'm not ready to do that. I'm just not ready to do that. I don't think that, I don't think that we can take anything away from these kids.
Yeah, just a quick comment. So I know that the people in Templeton have voted against this number on multiple occasions, but the thing is, if we only look at that to determine whether or not we're going to recertify the 19.7/8, it's kind of not taking into account the fact that the people who this will affect the most, the students, do not even have the opportunity to give their say. They can't vote, they can't vote on the committee, they can't even come out to town meeting and talk in the way that a registered voter can. So making this decision based on what the voters want utterly disregards the main purpose of the school committee, which is to represent the needs of the students. So I think that it's almost irresponsible to not take into account the fact that the students should be the main priority of this whole committee.
Okay, so I think, is it, okay. I'll get back to you. And then you, yes, James?
Just to kind of figure back on what I said, no matter what happens, if you, I mean, I don't, like I said, the main priority of this committee is for the students, and being a student myself, and I have been in education for 12 years, not as a teacher, but as a student, we know how it works, and we know what can hurt us, and what hurts our education. And we're five weeks into school now, if, and I'm saying if, a cut is made, it is going to be drastic to the kids. I am in every single building, I intern in a kindergarten classroom, I can see, not, and kindergarten for a second, I'm always in that building, because I have an internship there. Nowhere in that building is there a free hand. They are always engaging with students, and they need it. Times are changing, students need more. We need more. I do not want to see a hurt to my education when I can't have a say about it, just like I said. Thank you.
So understand that taxpayers have been clear that kids will learn, that they have to reduce the budget, that other things are needed. But given that, we haven't, you know, I don't know that our parents have understood, I think they left saying, oh, well, everything's okay. I mean, we, we... The committee voted to take school choice money and fix what seemed to be their issue, which was high-class sizes. These cuts come through, the class sizes are there. That's what they didn't want. They didn't want different building situations. Can't guarantee that won't happen with this. So what, only thing I'm asking is to hold off, and maybe it's a pipe dream, but to hold off a week and see if the parents can wake up and understand that their child may not, on November 1st, have the same teacher they have today. But no, they did not come to those meetings, and the people from the towns have to be respected. They give up their time, they come and vote a certain way, and we understand that. I'm just asking for a week. You know, one man, some gentleman stood up and said, well, here's the list from the town cut. Well, what we're saying now is, here's the list from the school cut, parents. Are you going to advocate for it, or do we just do what, we'll reach a number? That's been given to us. So, yes, I mean, students can talk about what they want, and it's also been said at town meeting, kids will learn no matter what. Let the parents decide that. Right now, I think they're asleep.
Mrs. Matson?
Yes. I actually want to thank both of the students for talking. It would be really nice to actually have kids come to our meetings and give their advice as to what affects them. And I think that would, that would really help us when we make decisions like that, or this. And it's nice to have the two of you on our committee, but it's also really nice to have you guys and your other students out in the audience, so that we can hear from them. And we don't, unfortunately. And all we hear from is the parents, and they're the ones paying the bills, unfortunately. So...
Yeah, I respectfully disagree.
Right, right. And unfortunately, that's what's coming to the meetings. So, I mean, it is what it is, honestly.
Just for the public's sake, I just want to, last month, we started having our Student Advisory Council reps sit with us at the table. State law says they have a seat, they have a voice, they're not voting members, so just wanted to announce to the public that are wondering why we have students here, that that is why they're here. Eventually, we'll get them some nameplates, maybe, hopefully, I don't know if we, depending on where we go for our next meeting, but they're coming. So that's why they're at this table, because state law says that we need some representation. But I think, to your point, Mrs. Matson, it'd be great to have other students fill the room as well, so...
To the superintendent's point, that when people don't come, that's a message as well. Not to say students aren't paying the bills, we're talking about bill payments. And I've said repeatedly on YouTube that we're here for kids. So the budget we presented was for kids. If they don't come, they're telling us something as well. And if we don't see them in a week from now or two weeks at our next scheduled meeting, then they've told us.
Mr. Mason?
Next week is what I'm hearing.
So what I'm hearing, I'm just going to, and is that Mrs. Tripolo has proposed that we go forth certifying our current number to give, and we've announced what could potentially happen. We meet again in one week's time rather than two, which is our normal scheduled meeting. We'll push it back a week and see what input we get. And then that would give us a chance to recertify at that point if we chose to do so. So we are just delaying, we're not delaying. We can recert, anytime up into the district-wide town meeting, this committee can recertify the number. Okay.
I'd be willing to reconsider next week once we actually know, you know, what cuts, you know, what cuts are going to happen. Without having any input from the community after they, you know, and they not knowing what the cuts will be, I think certainly could reconsider next week once all that's up there.
Margaret?
Yes.
So we're going to have a week. And then next week, we'll have a meeting. And we're going to have a flood of people come in. And they're going to tell us that we don't want you to do this. And I want you to certify at that number. And then we'll have that district-wide meeting. And then nobody will come, and we'll get the same reaction. That's what's going to happen?
You have to recertify whatever number goes that night anyway. Do you see what I'm saying?
Well, we don't have.
We don't have.
We don't have.
I don't, no, no, I didn't mean that. You're going to have to address it.
Yes.
What I'm saying is you'll have to address it after.
Do we have to, though?
Yeah, we do.
Do we have to?
Well, if we don't do anything, December 1st will come around.
Correct.
Which, de facto, we don't know exactly what the state would do. But let's assume they're going to go with the number they've already given us.
They would come in.
Yeah, and then we go through that process. But we would have the opportunity to meet again as a committee and determine what number we would like to certify and should change our mind. I mean, if, you know, so if the town comes out once again, and 19-5 is what it is, then this committee has to seriously consider, you know, what's the message we've, you know, we're getting? And take action.
Or let the state come in.
Or let the state come in, right? That would be like the two options that we have. So I'm going to do one more attempt to recertify our original number. Let's see where that goes. And then I think regardless, actually, before we do that, I would like to ask the committee to indulge me and accept moving the meeting from the 16th to the 9th, regardless of what our current vote is going to be. Because either way, we have discussion and decisions to make. So is that okay? We actually had a finance subcommittee meeting scheduled to kick off FY '21. I will recommend we probably cancel that at this point. We'll delay it a few weeks. So would that be okay with the committee to move the 16th meeting till the 9th?
Yes.
Move it, yeah, we're just going to move the meeting from the 16th to the 9th. And if after the 9th, we decide we need another meeting, we'll deal with that at that point. Okay.
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock?
The Kiva.
In the Kiva? Okay. So that is done. So we will have a meeting in one week's time. So I just want to take that housekeeping out. So with that being done, I will, once again, entertain a motion that the Narragansett Regional School District School Committee vote certify the amount of $19,786,889 for the FY '20 budget. I have a motion.
Second.
And I have a second. Any discussion? Yes, Marks?
Is that with the additional receipts?
We'll do three other motions, which will increase the additional receipts and lower the allocations for this one. Mr. Mason, did you have a...
I hopefully, by my point, say, I would pay with here what chaos this will bring. We have to go with all of them.
Just to say again, that my intention is to speak with everyone tomorrow. I can't make a promise. I don't know if I'll get, if someone's out sick or something. They might have to go till tomorrow, Thursday. And, but within the next couple of days, I'm going to put out a letter detailing exactly what I'm speaking of. Just, you'll have that information within the week. Yes. Within a week, or two days, so to speak.
Any other comments or questions? Okay. I have a motion on the floor that the Narragansett Regional Schools of School Committee vote certify the amount of $19,786,889 for the FY '20 budget has been motioned and seconded. And hearing no further discussion, I will do a roquel vote. Mrs. Chardier? Mr. Mason? Mrs. Tripolo?
Yes.
Mr. Marks?
Yes.
Mrs. Robichaud?
Yes.
Mrs. Matson?
No.
And Mrs. Hughes says yes. So we do have the majority needed to certify the budget at the $19,786,889. With that number reconfirmed for certification, we do need to recertify our estimated income. I'm going to put the number with the new receipts in, which was an additional $5,638 of charter school reimbursement and an additional $43,248 in Chapter 71 monies, for a total of $48,886 in additional receipts. So that would mean, I would entertain a motion that the Narragansett Regional Schools of School Committee vote the estimated income of $11,215,330 for fiscal year '20, which is based on the Chapter 70 actual income and the estimated Chapter 71 aid on the cherry sheet for FY '20. So I have a motion. Do I have a second? And I have a second. Any discussion on the estimated receipts piece? Okay. Yes, so it's a total of, and I'm...
Is that what's on here?
It's, yeah. Eleven, it's A.
A.
A. Are we good? $11,215,330. All right. So I have a motion, and I have a second for the estimated income of $11,215,330 for FY '20. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, Mrs. Chardier? Mr. Mason? Mrs. Tripolo?
Yes.
Mr. Marks? Mrs. Robichaud?
Yes.
And Mrs. Matson?
No.
And Mrs. Hughes says yes. So that passes. Based on those two numbers, I would entertain a motion that the Narragansett Regional Schools of School Committee vote the assessment to the town of Templeton in the amount of $6,923,909 for fiscal year '20. I have a motion. Do I have a second? And I have a second. Any questions on that number? Seeing none, Mrs. Chardier? Mr. Mason? Mrs. Tripolo? Mr. Marks?
Yes.
Mrs. Robichaud?
Yes.
Mrs. Matson?
No.
And Mrs. Hughes says yes. So we do have the majority needed. And last, I would entertain a motion that the Narragansett Regional Schools of School Committee vote the assessment to Phillipston in the amount of $1,647,650 for fiscal year '20. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
And I have seconds. Any questions, comments? Seeing none, Mrs. Chardier? Mr. Mason? Mrs. Tripolo? Mr. Marks? Mrs. Robichaud?
Yes.
Mrs. Matson? And Mrs. Hughes says yes. So we do have the majority needed. So what this means is that we are, we've reconfirmed the certification, altered the estimated income and assessments to the towns. And we will be, at this point, moving forth with the district-wide town meeting based on that. But we will meet in one week's time. And it will be on the agenda again to look at the FY '20 numbers and have discussion and potential reconsideration at that point in time. With those numbers certified, we do need to discuss the next district-wide town meeting and get that moving forward because we are under timelines with that. And looking at the calendar, we have to have a meeting within 45 days of the last district-wide town meeting. And we have been asked just to be cautious of when the other select boards meet. It looks like October 30th would fall close to the 45 days. It also gives us time for some more input and reconsideration if necessary. So I would like to put out a recommendation that Wednesday, October 30th, at 7:00 p.m., we schedule our next district-wide town meeting. Does that work for the committee? Okay, anyone against that, Dave? Okay. Mrs. Barney, if you have a warrant, if you could pass out a warrant to the committee just to take a quick look at, because we'll approve, we just need to vote and approve the warrant. That would be great. I see you have one copy in your hand. Do we probably, do we need to just have one or two? Okay. Okay. And then we can approve the actual warrant. What that will also mean as far as logistics is we will need to meet to have another moderator be appointed by the two select boards. And we could talk about that if we wanted to potentially do that prior to our meeting next week. If it worked for the select boards and take care of the housekeeping and have it done in preparation. And I think that would probably be, at this point, the only other thing we'll need to do other than actually vote on the warrant itself.
Did you say meet before your meeting next week?
Yeah, or as par, or... Which is fair. I know...
I think that's probably way too, I mean, I'm going to try and...
Say, well, I know that, I know you do meet tomorrow night. Actually, the Phillipston and Templeton meet together tomorrow night. So I don't know if you could have your discussion then and be ready to meet with us and do a...
I don't know if we can have to be a gentleman like that. I could certainly try to speak to the chair this evening.
Yep. I mean, it would be unanticipated, 48 hours. So, but how about we leave that up to you? If, in fact, it would work, we can, maybe Mrs. Barney will reach out.
I'll try to talk to the chair this evening about how soon we need to choose a moderator. I think we can try and go back and...
Yep.
So I think this coming time, it might be a surprise. I'm not sure if you're really doing it that way. I don't know.
Okay. Well, we'll let you, as board speak, maybe...
And I apologize for interrupting.
No, 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 that's fair. No, and it is. It's very helpful. Thank you. We'll let you discuss maybe tomorrow evening. And then we can, we'll add it to our agenda. Yeah, we'll add it to our agenda for next week. And if it works, otherwise, we'll pass over and reschedule a meeting and see if the time, I see, Mrs. Prent? Okay, so you wouldn't be able to make it? Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. Although unless we could do it early enough. And then you have to keep, so we'll try and work that to ensure that we can do our due diligence to set the meeting up properly and with enough time.
Yeah, I'm going to try and send an email to everyone and I'll say that we're trying to figure out, like, when to choose a moderator.
Okay. Perfect, yeah, because it'll, we can find who might be willing and have that ready as well. That would be awesome. Thank you. Appreciate that. Okay. Waiting for the copier to warm up, sorry. While, while the copier is warming up, I'm going to just jump ahead to school committee comment. Yes?
While putting in the date, there, we, there's a conflict in the auditorium. A fairly, an unmovable... Yeah, on 10/30. It is the Winchon School, private school, has rented that for several days for their fall concert, which they've already, of course, sold tickets back in July or something to that effect. I don't know if it's a date earlier. I don't know if it's multiple days. Can you give us?
Yeah, no, please check the calendar. Yes, I forget that we do allow others to use the auditorium. And to be honest, I didn't even look at our own internal events to see if there's anything else going on. The day after is Halloween, so we certainly don't want to... The day before is not good.
I don't know.
Okay. It looks like the 30th is out, yes, so... They're checking now about the, oh, the week before. So we need, in order to schedule the meeting, we have to have our warrant posted and notification in the newspapers at least 14 days prior. So today is October 1st.
First.
We could, if we sign the warrant tonight. It'd be tough to get it in the paper for tomorrow. It wouldn't happen. It would be the 3rd. You're looking at maybe the 17th, the earliest. And I wouldn't trust the paper to be able to... That does not work for us. It's too many days out. 45 days is November 8th.
Can we do the 20th?
We, yeah, Tuesday. So Tuesday, the 5th is election day. So that's, makes it, yeah, that's a little tough to do with people trying to get to the polls. But let's, so, but Mrs. Barney, just see if October 29th or maybe even the Monday, October 28th, might be... We have a multi-board meeting on the 28th. But you know what? We can always move that. That, I think, is of lesser importance. I know this is...
Well, the 29th, I can say that the auditorium is...
As well. How about the 28th, the Monday, the 28th?
Can't do the gym.
Or, or Monday, November 4th. What about the new school? Or the meeting in the gym?
The parking would be absolutely difficult.
Yeah.
Is the 4th out of the, is the 4th out of the realm?
The 4th is not out of the realm. No, we were just looking because we said, well, let's do the week before. But the 4th is, that's a Monday, November 4th.
Margaret?
Yes.
I don't think I'll be here that week.
That week?
Really? And you said this week is out because it's too soon?
I guess the, well, no. What did I say? Waiting for the copier to warm up, sorry. While, while the copier is warming up, I'm gonna just jump ahead to school committee comment. Yes?
While putting in the, the date, there, we, there's a conflict in the auditorium. A fairly, an unmovable...
On 10:30?
Yeah, on 10:30. It is the, the Winchon School, private school, has rented that for several days for their fall concert, which they've already, of course, sold tickets back in July, or something to that effect.
Okay.
I don't know if it's a date earlier. I don't know if it's multiple days. Can we, if you give us the minute?
Yeah, no, please check the calendar. Yes, I forget that we do allow others to use the auditorium. And to be honest, I didn't even look at our own internal events, to see if there's anything else going on. The day after is Halloween, so we certainly don't want to. The day before is not good.
I don't know.
Okay. It looks like the 30th is out, yes, so...
At least the 4th, do you have a...
They're checking now about the, oh, the week before.
Is that in the...
So we need, in order to schedule the meeting, we have to have our warrant posted, and notification in the newspapers at least 14 days prior. So today is October...
First.
First. We could, if we sign the warrant tonight...
I think it's, um...
It'd be tough to get it in the paper for the, for tomorrow. It wouldn't happen. It would be the 3rd. You're looking at maybe the 17th, the earliest, and I wouldn't trust the paper to be able to...
I think it's November 6.
That does not work for us.
Maybe it's 13?
It's too, too many days out. Forty-five days is November 8th.
Can we do the 20th?
We, we, yeah, Tuesday. So, Tuesday, the 5th is Election Day. So that's, makes it, yeah, that's a little tough to do with people trying to get to the polls. But let's, so, let Mrs. Varney just see if, if October, October 29th, or maybe even the Monday, October 28th, might be, we have a multi-board meeting on the 28th, but you know what, we can always move that. That, I think, is of lesser importance. I know this is...
There's some things that don't matter as much as others, but I know this pack meeting has got pack meetings for many of these people who should be attending this meeting on November 29th. So that might not be the best...
Well, the 29th, I can say that the, the auditorium is...
As well. How about the 28th, the Monday, 28th?
Yeah.
Can't do the gym.
Or, or Monday, November 4th?
No. No.
What about the new school? Or the cap, or meeting in the gym?
The, the parking would be absolutely difficult.
Yeah.
Is the 4th out of the, is, is the 4th out of the realm?